MacAlpin Industries located at 875 Publishers Parkway. Appleton, McAlpin Industries, this request a preliminary final site plan approval along with a public hearing associated with the construction of Phase 1, which is 100,000 square feet and a total of 300,000 square feet, and a light manufacturing warehouse of 25.65 acre lot located in a high intensity commercial district under Section 26911 of the Code of the Towne Webster.
Good evening. Mike Ritchie from Cost of Engineering. This meeting is Matt McAlpin from McAlpin Industries. Thank you for allowing us to come in front of the board. We were last in front of you a few months ago where we presented the project. Matt presented the overview of his company and what they do. Since then, I think the issues were the coordinated review of the seeker and the wetland review. We did receive some additional PRC comments from town staff and we've subsequently revised the plans and resubmitted to address those comments. We did receive the no impact letter from the DEC relative to the wetlands, so we received that last week when we were asked to pass that along to Josh. You know, we did also hear in the previous time, Mr. China, that we were in front of you, they were looking for some more architectural detail on that building. We did some additional architectural renderings.
Did you change the zone?
Not sure.
The one you just gave?
Most of those are in the submission. There's a couple additional ones in there just to reemphasize what we're trying to accomplish.
Should we just say a little bit?
A lot more updates to it. Again, this is-
It's not a pull bar, right?
That's impressive.
It's a phase project, Phase 1. I think I heard 100,000, but was applied for 120,000 square foot for the first phase, Phase 300,000 square foot overall. So that first phase being on the south side of the project and subsequent additions would be to the north. We also did make some revisions to the utilities. We did add a second stormwater management pond on the north side of the site to get some additional earth, also to prevent some low spots on that north area and hopefully allow any future development on that very north end on Publishers to be able to utilize that for stormwater management as well. So we addressed all the comments from PRC, from the agency's water authority help department and the like, and with this board's approval, we're looking to move forward with site work on this in probably the next month or two. So their team's ready to go and we'd be happy to answer any questions that this board had.
Okay, you submitted, I think it was April 15th, I think it was April 15th, you had some comments, you addressed all the comments and then you had the latest addition of-
And we revised and resubmitted those back as well. They were technical in nature, no major showstoppers or anything, and again, if there's any condition that this board has, any other comments going forward, we'd be happy to-
These are, this is all primarily 99% all engineering detail.
Yeah, and I think most of the engineering's been sorted out.
And I don't want to deal with all that part, but the concern we have is the building, what's it gonna look like, traffic, things of that nature. Your traffic study?
We did.
We completed that. What else was there? I think, there's probably the one in the main patch, wasn't there?
Widening, widening the, some track trail.
Yeah, the track trail, I forgot.
Yep, yeah, we proposed a slight widening of the entrance there. We did also propose a dedicated left-hand turn into the site, which will be part of the first phase.
Okay. We can open it as a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in regard to this project?
Sure.
Josh, is there a mic?
Hi, Tanya Davis. I might be behind the curve on this one, but it looks like you guys are calling it high-density commercial as the zoning? Yeah, that's what's on your plan. So I'm just wondering if you've, and again, I might be behind the curve, so I don't, again, my fault if I haven't been following the story.
What is it you're specifically looking for?
Yeah, no, my question is given that it's office park and this is a warehouse facility. It would be one of the uses that the town board basically have to do a special use permit for, so I'm just wondering where we are in that process.
That was taken care of initially with the town board.
Got it.
That was the first step on the front.
But it is office park, so, right?
It is zoned still, not that yet, but that was required town board.
Okay, and then, again, I'm just behind the curve, but that's, that's all. I just was wondering, and I just wanted to make sure that if it is office park, that you guys are still adhering to the lot coverage maximums?
We are.
Okay, of course. Thank you.
What's up? Anyone else? Is there a board meeting here? I've looked at this several times.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's on, I asked him.
Oh, okay.
Josh, can you zoom in to the entrance way there? So the vehicle turnaround that is shown on the fire truck, are you saying you have WB50 trucks there? Are you able to provide vehicle turnarounds for WB50 in that entrance space?
I believe, I believe we ran a WB62 on that as well. I don't know if the detail for that shows 50. I don't know, Matt, do you think WB50-
It's just showing a fire truck. It doesn't show standard operation vehicle coming in and out. My concern is just on Hard Road, north-south, in, does the other side have to be widened too? Coming soft bomb going into the facility?
I don't believe any, any proposed trucks are proposed to come from the north side. All the truck traffic will come from the north.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody?
So you seem to stop pavement to shore the existing facility there. Any intention, potential to mill and pave all the way to Hard Road after construction?
That wasn't part of our plan, but I can talk about, you know, it shouldn't be a major change to the scope to mill, you just make that a nice uniform pavement. You have an issue with that? We already paved that portion by the end.
It's just after construction. You're gonna be doing work for it, it's gonna be in the traffic, you know, if it gets the way to look nicer, it's just a continuous-
Yeah, a nice finished product. We agree, and then, you know, then we can put topping on everything and reed and striping and make it all uniform.
I'm not sure if it will be part of your, but I guess this question's with Josh, you know, should there be a stop sign on that intersection there onto Hard Road, especially now with truck traffic being proposed? Should there be a stop sign and strike slot be on that intersection?
Sure. Yeah, that would be, that's a private road, so that would not be the town's responsibility.
We have no issue with that.
Josh, can, this is, can you look utility plan and go to the front of the building? If you zoom in to where the auto line goes into the building, just wanna get a clarification here. You have a combined system going in and then a combined system leaving the building. Is it gonna be just hydrant dedicated going out, or is that-
Yes, yeah, we split the building for domestic fire sprinkler and then back out to the-
So that's just a correction that has to be made on drawings?
Yeah, we're coordinating with MEP, just trying to get everything sorted out where all the connections fly, but yeah, that's the intent.
Are you able to provide a mechanical room drawing, which is showing how that-
I think that'll be part of the building permit process, but that will be not, again, we're, you know, meter backflow in an enclosure out of the road where it separates the public water.
And I was just surprised not to see profile views of the secondary storm lines. Is that something you guys can add?
Absolutely, I think that's, you know, something for construction. Again, there's no, there's nothing really out there in terms of conflicts with other utilities, but certainly can provide profile view for us.
And then I think my last question here, with that pond going in now in the back, do you have access going up to it for maintenance?
That was not a comment that was generated, but we certainly have no issue providing an access easement to the Towne Webster for both ponds, knowing that they are gonna be private, but in the event that town never needed to give them, we have no issue granting easements for us.
I guess would it be just an easement or would it be also like a storm rattle or, you know, to the back there and do maintenance?
You know, I think the intent is that that parking lot adjacent to it would be built and that would allow it to provide access. We can certainly look into that to make sure that if town staff need to get back there, put a gravel access road to the berm to the outlet structure, we can add that in.
So Josh, does the Towne Webster maintain the pond?
No. We would require a stormwater maintenance agreement. We need the responsibility.
It would still be a good idea to add something there in case they need to hire a contractor to hog out the pond so it doesn't, you know, destroy the landscape, so we can put that in the plans for sure.
So I've heard they're putting in a access road to it for maintenance, and then the volume of that pond, just wanna make sure they're not at a US Army Corps dam level or below it?
Or below the height for a dam access.
Right, and then the spillway that you've had there, the discharge to it, you indicating where it's going and-
Yep.
Just wanna make sure that it's not impacting the neighboring-
We did have to look at that because, you know, everything had arranged north up for Publishers, so we have a spillway and then a swale and then a dedicated secondary stormline to get that all to north, so it doesn't pond back in there.
There are, there are some engineering things in there.
Well, a lot, yeah, a lot of the stuff actually, it's all engineering detail, that's why if an engineer's to look at that also, they have reviewed a lot of this already, so drainage and a lot of hours going into that. Anybody else have any questions? All right, then we'll close the public hearing, bring it back in. All right, at the last, we actually, we made a motion, I believe, that we take lead agency as long as we just did, we went out for 30 days and then we took probably 41 of it, that's for sure. So it came back, 30 days are up, so we need to make a motion to take lead agency for the secret process. You can combine, can you combine that there? Do that right along with the motion? Okay. Unless there's other accounts. I'm sorry, any other? You know, I closed.
Previously determined as a type 1 action, we're in motion for type 1 action. Towne, once your planning board consider request by Appleton McAlpin Industries to construct a 300,000 square foot light manufacturing warehouse in 25.65 acre parcel, having a SPO number 079.06-1-12.123 located at 875 Publishers Parkway. The planning board determined that the proposed action under type 1 action under Part 617 of the Urban Area Quality Review, the planning board determined that the action is subject to single agency review pursuant to Part 617.6 of the Home Seeker and that it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. The planning board therefore designates itself lead agency for the proposed action. The planning board has given consideration with criteria for determining significance as set forth in Section 617.7C1 of Seeker and as one considered the information contained in the environmental assessment form part 1 dated January 29, 2025, considered public campus directive, planning board during the public hearing and the sixth, 2025, and three completed parts being three of our one assessment form. Now that for be resolved with the Towne Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination announced in the documents. Be it further resolved with the Towne Webster Planning Board authorized to take all eight actions reasonable and necessary, file an A O declaration and discharge the Towne Webster Towne for its responsibility, lead agency for this action. Be it further resolved with the Towne Webster Planning Board based on the information and analysis of both the reference supporting documentation and discussions of the actions of the Towne Webster Planning Board documented by the Minister of Speaking, that the proposed action will not result in a significant environmental impact. Be it further resolved with the Towne Webster Planning Board therefore makes determination on that significance, be it further resolved with the Towne Webster Planning Board based on the above reasons, issues and negative declarations, because everyone submits a determination.
Okay, we have a motion from McAlpin's project. We're gonna decide.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Gargan?
Hi.
Mr. Malta?
Hi.
Mr. Fushami?
Hi.
Mr. Kersel?
Hi.
Mr. Gaskin?
Hi.
Mrs. Walton?
Hi.
Mr. Fushami?
Hi.
Mr. Kersel?
Hi.
Mr. Gaskin?
Hi.
Mrs. Walton?
Hi.
Mr. Fushami?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, so then let's hold, and then, is that okay with all you folks?
Yeah.
If we do that in a couple weeks, we get their stuff in, that way we got a complete set of drawings, they're ready to get to engineering, everything is in good shape. Okay? All right, thanks a lot, fellas. Nice job with the building.
Thank you.
Very good. Simple meeting here tonight. This was a requested meeting to have a separate meeting in regard to the McAlpin Industries project to move forward with final approval on it, and welcome y'all here.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ryan. My name is Mike Ritchie from Cost of Engineering. With me we have Darla and Mark from McAlpin Industries. We are here tonight for final, final site plan and special use permit approval for Phase 1 of McAlpin Industries warehouse. We were here two weeks ago as board granted seeker and preliminary approval, and there were some comments that the board had from that meeting, site plan comments and comments related to architecturals. We since revised those plans to address the planning board's comments and submitted revised plans after that. Did have a conversation with the town engineer, he had one minor comment about the access, the entrance. We worked through that, revised the plans again, had a conference call with him and Josh and the highway superintendent yesterday, and they expressed that they were satisfied with the change that was made. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that this board has, and again, requesting the final site plan and special use permit approval. Thank you.
Okay, I didn't read this into the record, is it right? Actually, this was to, at the PRC again, it was discussed, talked about widening that section of the road. First thought was that that, we call it hot patch or something, it's in the way, that's on the extended pond actually, so that road is clear cut going in, so there is roads that widen, correct?
Yep, and we did, we widened it to about 40 feet wide there at the entrance, so that even the largest truck won't cross over the yellow line.
Okay, I just had a couple of notes on there, I mean, this big, big piece of paper you got, Mike, but I've got pretty good eyes, but I'm looking at it, I'm having a hard time to see, I mean, you're showing Phase 3 and Phase 2 on the other page and stuff, but exterior finish, I can't, I can't see that, I didn't bring my magnifying glass.
Understood, I know, we did submit some large sheets, it's unwieldy to work with sometimes, so it's a little bit easier to see the detail on those.
So you'll have that all, it'll be, what you've got will be blown up?
Yep.
In a full sheet?
Yes, there are three copies of those, we're still-
All right, so let me just ask you a question, and just Phase 1, forget, forget Phase, forget, forget Phase.
You have that one, Tom?
Yeah, no, I've seen that, no, I've saw that. My concern is, it's Phase 2 and Phase 3, but I wanna see a nice picture of Phase 1, where we use a bit of material on Phase 1, so I don't know what, what you're showing on there, like at the entrance.
Yep, for Phase 1, yeah, again, it's, it's metal, exterior metal, it's, and around the main entrance of Phase 1 again, the intent is that that isn't gonna be the ultimate main entrance, that's just for right now, but it is gonna be a stacked stone entryway with some highlighting in blue. The main colors are, I believe they're gray and, what was the, change, a white and a gray.
Yeah, and then blue accenting the, the entrance there, and then the main entrance, which would be in the second phase, that's-
Yeah, when you ultimately get to that, that's attractive, that-
Yep, and it's tough to see if the monitoring does show it, you know, a little bit better context than over to the left, that it's, you know, a stacked stone, little best of you'll entrance with, with blue siding at the end.
Yep. All right, that's all I had, I mean, the kind of rush that was asked for.
Can I ask about the monument sign, the drawing you have here?
Yes.
Is it 1964? Because you can hardly see it, it doesn't shine out like the mountain name does.
Yeah, we could work with the sign company to make it more bright white so it pops out, instead of maybe the metal finish, yeah.
Before you get into the sign, let's keep that as a whole separate issue. U of R has a sign out there, you're gonna want a sign out there too.
Yep.
My suggestion is you guys work together with them and put the two signs, talking to Josh today about it, on one pedestal setup, because that sign ultimately, their sign's gonna have to get moved over anyways.
That's correct.
So they can keep the same sign, you could put your sign, put one neat pedestal and the two signs side by side, you don't want two separate sides of your cabin.
And Mark actually just mentioned that he's had conversations with U of R and they're, they're willing to work with McAlpin-
Great, that's good.
Yeah.
So as far as the sign, let's hold off on the sign?
John? I'll be, I'll come back.
All important tonight, until you guys know where it's gonna be, what it's gonna look like?
We are fine with that.
And then you have the signs, the whole stuff you got. The other thing with the sign too, or the address, your address is-
And so, based on the conversations we had with the board and town staff, know there's intent to not give this property a hard road address, so we worked with Monroe County 911 and submitted a bunch of names and they approved, we're okay naming the private tribe Metal Works Way. To understand that creates a little bit of potential confusion with the U of R facility since they have a hard road address, and we're willing to work with the town, work with Monroe County Emergency Services and whatever the most logical way to name that, whether U of R is willing to change their address from Hard Road to Metal Works Way and McAlpin works with them on that.
Imagine with that, like I think for them, I mean, they got thousands of clients.
Sure, they don't want that confused.
I don't think they're gonna wanna change it.
Right.
I think it would be, if you guys are agreeable to that, is to change yours to a hard road address.
We can certainly do that, yeah, that's-
Make it one road, because that's gonna be confusing as all that.
Yep, we don't want that.
Okay?
Yeah, we understand that, we don't want emergency services being-
So in the process of doing that, why don't you guys work on your sign to coincide with the hard road address?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think that would be good, that would figure that out for sure. That'd be a lot easier and quicker.
Yep, we agree.
All right, but that was, that was the question. Anybody, any concerns about anything? This is all been beat up by engineering, so I don't wanna get into engineering.
Aw, come on.
No, no, no.
My question's Phase 2, do you guys have a rough schedule and why are you just getting moving Phase 2?
Yep. As we've been planning, I think we've been getting more and more excited for it, we like the look of the building, excited to expand. Right now, it's still, the guideline is probably five to eight years, it would be that phase, that would be additional growth. We're not there right now, even though we really like the looks of it, so we're getting excited, but just not quite yet.
And, any concerns?
No.
The sign, a good point you brought up, you reminded me, because we've discussed incorporating the two together, so. Derek?
No, I'm sorry.
David?
I'm all good.
This is a little bit- We just have one more.
Go ahead, go ahead.
This is more just a, for the road, where you go from 24 foot wide to 26 foot wide, if you make it, temper that out so that a plow doesn't nick it.
Yeah, we can do that over, you know, upper length-
Just flare it out.
Yep, flare it out, make it a smooth transition, yep, that's a good idea.
Okay, that's it? All right, we've done seeker, this project has received a preliminary approval. Tonight they're here for a final approval, and also, what this board's charged with is to issue a special use permit for this project too, because it's in the OP district. So we gotta do a final approval. You wanna do a final, I just see, or, yeah, here, okay.
Um, and then the main entrance, which would be in, in the, the second phase, that's.
Yeah, when you ultimately get to that, that, that's attractive, that.
Yep, and you can, it, it's tough to see if the rendering does show it, you know, a little bit better context and over to the left, um, that it's, you know, a stacked stone, um, little vestibule, uh, entrance with, uh, with, with blue siding at the end.
Yeah. All right, that, that's all I had. I mean, accomplished everything that was asked for.
Can I ask about the monument sign? Drawn you have here?
Yes.
Uh, nineteen, is it nineteen sixty-four? Because you can hardly see it, it doesn't shine out like the, uh, Alton name does.
Yeah, we can work with the sign company to make it more bright white so it pops out, uh, instead of maybe the metal finish, yeah.
It would be no.
Before you get into the sign, let's, let's keep that as a whole separate issue. Um, U of R has a sign out there, you're gonna wanna sign it out there too.
Yep.
My suggestion is you guys work together with them and put the two signs, talking to Josh today about it, on one pedestal setup, 'cause that sign ultimately, their sign's gonna have to get moved over anyways.
That's correct.
So they can keep the same sign, you could put your sign, put one neat pedestal?
Yep.
And the two signs side by side, you don't want two separate sides.
Aye. And Mark actually just mentioned that he's had conversations with U of R and they're, they're willing to, to work with Calhoun.
Great, that's good.
Yeah, so.
So, so as far as the sign, let's hold off on the sign.
Done.
That's all important tonight, until you guys know where it's gonna be, what it's gonna look like.
We are fine with that.
The deal with the sign is the whole stuff you got. The other thing with the sign too, um, are the address, your, your address is.
And so, based on conversations we had with, with the board and town staff, you know, there was intent to, um, not give this property, uh, a hard road address. So we worked with, uh, Monroe County nine one one, um, and submitted a bunch of names and they approved, we're okay naming the private tribe Metal Works Way. To understand that creates a little bit of potential confusion with the U of R facility since they have a hard road address. And we're willing to, to work with the town, work with Monroe County Emergency Services and whatever the most logical way to name that, whether U of R is willing to change their address from Hard Road to Metal Works Way and, and Calhoun works with them on that.
Imagine, but I think for them, I mean, they got thousands of clients.
Sure, they don't want that.
I don't think they're gonna wanna change it.
Right, right.
I think it would be, if you guys are agreeable to that, is to change yours to a hard road address.
We can certainly do that, yeah, that's.
Make it one road, you guys, that's gonna be confusing as all that.
Yep, we don't want that.
Okay?
Yeah, we, we understand that, we don't want emergency services being.
So in the process of doing that, why don't you guys work out your sign to coincide with the hard road address?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think that would be good that we figure that out, it's gonna be a lot easier and quicker.
Yep, we are.
All right, um, good, that was, that was. Anybody, any concerns about anything? This is all been beat up by engineering, so I don't wanna get into engineering.
Aw.
No, no, no.
My, my question's phase two, do you guys have a rough schedule and why are you disputing your phase two?
Yep, um, as we've been planning, um, I think we've been getting more and more excited for it. We like the look of the building, excited to expand. Right now, it's still, the guideline is probably five to eight years, it would be that phase. Um, that would be additional growth. We're not there right now, even though we really like the looks of it, so we're getting excited, but just not quite yet.
Okay. Any, any concerns?
No.
The, the sign, a good point you brought up, you remind me, 'cause we've discussed incorporating the two together, so. Derek? You all set? I have your. David? You okay?
This is cool, but. We just, there's several more, sorry. Um, this is more just a, for a road, where you go from twenty-four foot wide to twenty-six foot wide. If you make it, uh, theme for that out so that a cloud doesn't nick it.
Yeah, we can do that over, you know, upper length.
Just flare it out.
Yep, flare it out, make it a smooth transition, yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, that's it? Good. All right, we've done seeker, this project has received a preliminary approval. Tonight they are here for a final approval and also what this board's charged with is to, uh, issue a special use permit for this project too, because it's in the, uh, O P district. Uh, so we have to do a final approval, you wanna do a final approval, see, or? Yeah, here, okay. We have a more important final approval. On the Calhoun Industries, okay, eight seventy-five Publishers Parkway. Subject to project review committee comments, subject to perks and recues applicable. Subject to preliminary approval conditions, subject to all applicable common fees, subject to department of all the works of rules. Significant destruction occurring in the near year is being made a planning board to ensure that the date twenty, twenty twenty-six. Conditions of preliminary final approval are affected on the cover page of the final design plans. The engineer for the proposed trajectory should provide a certification that all proposed work was completed as to the main board resolution of final approval before certificate occupancy will be. A hundred credit to the town for the project should include a team from engineers by inspection. All the stormwater facilities can be constructed first. Subject to resolution of final approvals, the pools are subject to number. We have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kozel?
Aye.
Mr. Gassit?
Aye.
Mrs. Maltin?
Aye.
Mr. Pishani?
Aye. Uh, along with those minutes, final approval, I think we should include this too. This is a, uh, note from, uh, from Keith Mortimer, the town engineer. He would like to have this included also, and we'll put this in, David, if it's okay with you. Uh, requesting the following approval conditions, and this is, uh, striping of the pavement area to be used by W B dash six seven to emphasize access point lane usage by all other vehicles. And number two, location of a stop bar to maximize, uh, site distance. And number three, relocation of, modification of monument signs to mitigate impacts, uh, to, uh, site distance. And also a revised SWIP report prior to my lar signatures, okay? Those are four examples. We'll include that in, is that okay?
No, it's eight seventy five, it says Publishers Parkway, is that the correct address or?
That's, that's the address of, I believe, U of R.
It'd be hard road.
It's hard road, what did I say?
It says Publishers Parkway here, and that's what they said.
Oh, no, that's not, no.
So it should be hard road.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, it's, it's currently a Publishers Parkway address.
I noticed that's what is currently that way, that's why they put it in there.
Changes, so that's why the idea is to keep it as all one. Okay, did we, we did, we're all set, we're good with that. All right, anything else? No, that's it for that, no. Um, yeah, according to the town code, that is an O P, which is an office park district. Uh, allowable uses, this is, this was sent to the town board for a request, you folks, to, uh, put manufacturing facility out there, which was okay. Town board then referred it to the planning board for review. This board has reviewed it several times now, we've had it in and we've gone through it, we've tried to, I believe, right? And, and we all agree with the outcomes, we've made the final approval on it. So along with that then, our, our charge is to, is to issue a special use permit for this facility of manufacturing. So I guess, we can cut it short, but Article two sixty-nine dash thirty-two is your standards of all special use permits. And there's a list, we'll use, I'll, I'll go to them quickly. Um, uses permitted will be general harmony and promote general purpose and intent with the area. Impact on the district is minimal, it's similar to other businesses. Adjacent properties see, it's the location, height of the buildings conforms to what is in generally the area. Um, I'm using these as our findings for this thing. Uh, impacts on neighboring properties, there is no, there's special uses that. Doesn't cause any severe impacts on nearby properties, it's up, so. Uh, E, impacts on surrounding properties, nature duration intensity, uh, does not cause an issue with the surrounding properties. Traffic has been mitigated, that's been, uh, uh, designed, adequate parking on site for, for vehicles and so on. Uh, services, new shall be appropriately located, there is transportation, we need to have water supply, fire protection and so on, and that's all done. Uh, seeker, that has passed the seeker, we've run a seeker on this project. Uh, additional standards, special uses shall also be subject to any and all applicable local, state, and federal laws, codes which we, we're aware of, we've done that. Additional, additional standards or requirements that the planning board may originally request. And I think that will be done by, in our final approval. So I guess with that, I'll call that a motion, you have a second?
Second.
We're putting it there about obtaining a.
I'm sorry?
Should we put, in the more recent motions, we're worried about obtaining the hard road address?
What, that we requested?
That's a condition, isn't it?
Well, we discussed it, but.
We're fine if that's a condition, yeah.
Okay, you wanna do that? That way it's in there, okay, so that, that, okay, all right, that's it, you got it, right? Okay, all right, we're good there, you got it.
Mr. Pishani?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kozel?
Aye.
Mr. Gassit?
Aye.
Mrs. Maltin?
Aye.
And with that, I guess we're all set?
Thank you, thank you for the special, we appreciate it.
Been a little draw, but you got it.
Thanks, Mr.